I would like to call to order this meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission. Monday, September 14th, 2020, and it's a virtual meeting. 7:30 PM. Seating of members. We will greet our regular members Elaine Curley, Kim Tester, Dave Miller, Alan Johnson, and myself, Jim Conway. We have no one this evening for public comment. So we'll go to item three, approval of minutes of the public hearing. And did everybody get a chance to see the minutes of the public hearing? August 24th.
I did not.
That's right, you're having trouble with your computer, aren't you?
I, did I give you the new email address?
I thought so.
Because it wasn't on there.
You were, Elaine, you weren't with us on the 24th, were you?
No.
No.
Okay. And everybody else see the 24th public hearing minutes? They're really pretty short.
Yes.
Good evening.
Hey, Bill.
I was on six, that's cool, and zooming. So I'm, so I'm on the phone.
Okay.
Okay, great.
You're with us.
Easy for you to say. I didn't hit my, I didn't smack my computer, I just grinned. I'm here.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th public hearing.
I motioned to approve the minutes of the public hearing.
Then motioned and seconded, Kim, Alan. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
Okay.
Elaine up stains.
Correct. That order of business. Now we need an approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of August 24th.
Dave Miller, I'd like to approve the regular meeting minutes, the 24th of August.
And do I have a second for that?
I can second it, this is Kim.
David and Kim. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Elaine up stains. All right, all our minutes are taken care of. Okay, item four. Ongoing review zoning regs. Getting back. Okay, everybody. Going on, Jim.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think.
Everything I say is coming back. There it goes. I'm good now.
Okay.
All right. Adaptive reuse non-conforming barns.
So who is that? I mean, should we, um, Bill, why don't you try muting? Do you do that? I don't know if you can do that.
I don't know how to do it on my phone.
Okay, that's all right.
Oh, if you touch the bottom of your screen, Bill, it'll come up.
I'm trying to be very quiet.
I mean, I'm not reverbing, so Jim, go ahead and talk.
I'll, I'll try, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
I think we're better now. Nope. It's coming right through Bill's phone.
All right, you know what, I'll I'll, I'll, I'll hang up and I don't want to disrupt the meeting, I'll keep trying to get in on the computer.
Okay.
All right, so how's that?
We'll try this. I think we got it.
Yeah, it was his phone, okay.
Yeah, coming right back. Anyway, the adaptive reuse of non-conforming structures, non-conforming barns, in this case, just barns. And we discussed it last month. And the reasoning behind this, John Cody put it all together with our current reg. And the new, it's pretty simple. It's pretty simple. Is to allow the portion of the barn that is conforming to have a, an adaptive use. To encourage people to maintain their barns. Give them something else to do. And at the same time, and it can be used for habitation, to increase more apartments. So, John wrote it down, I can't see, it's, it's pretty simple.
Need it for, want me to read it out for the record, or?
Sure, yes.
So this is, would be, right now, the regu, the regulations go to 31016, so this, we, 3.10.17. Any non-conforming barn that straddles the front property whoops, that straddles the front property setback may have the portion of the structure that is located outside of the setback, or the conforming area can have that use changed. The conforming portion will be allowed to be converted into habitable space or other permissible uses. All other applicable regulations shall still apply. A complete site plan along with an affidavit shall be submitted stating that portion of the structure located inside the setback shall remain unchanged. And then there's also a definition for a barn, which would be new. A barn, structures that house livestock, including but not limited to cattle and horses, as well as farm equipment and fodder and often rain feed or hay.
Correct. One thing, John, we might want to add in there is no enlargement of the footprint. And no changes to the outside facade of the building. We want them to remaining, to look like the barn that it is, just using the inside differently.
But I don't know, I don't know, no changes is adequate enough to cover, you know, especially now. If, let's say there's a, a tab roof and they want to go to a metal roof. I can appreciate no change to the footprint. But if you, for example, if the windows are 28 square, and they're going to go to 32 square, they might, that might serve a purpose.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll stick with just footprint. Because I don't want to see these barns that are already, a lot of them are quite large, to get larger.
Jim, it's already in our regular, in the non-conforming uses, that we can't expand the size of the buildings.
Okay, so it's covered.
Yeah, that part's covered.
As far as the roofing materials and stuff like that, that's, that's inadequate.
Yeah, not a big deal. All right, so.
People are going to want to add doors or windows, or, you know.
Yeah, okay. I agree. I agree.
I'm sorry, it's John again, but that would, that would still be permissible as it is right now. Because non-conforming buildings, as long as they remain the same, they can be rebuilt to the original size and.
No, that's good, just one, they're not going to get bigger, they're just going to have a different use. And so I like what we've got. I can't think of any thing to add. What does the commission think, does, John? We need to throw this out to Gail? Just to cover ourselves?
You know, you know my feelings on that. It's a small fortune for something so easy.
I, I totally agree. I, I think we're good on this, I don't see any legal issues. And it's, obviously, it's going to public hearing. Gail can, Gail can come to the public hearing.
Yeah, well, we want to be sure our writing is implemented before we go to public hearing, right? Because we don't want to delay it.
We just read it.
In, in the number, yeah.
What are you going to change?
It's not that I'm going to change, I want to be sure that it's complete.
Well, from my perspective, I can't think of anything to add, and I'm not an attorney. But it looks pretty straightforward.
Can I make a suggestion, or no?
Certainly, oh, yes.
Okay. Instead of, can we reword this to say, any non-conforming barn that straddles the front property setback may have the use of the portions of the structure that is located outside of the setback, conforming area changed? That to me sounds clearer.
Cleaner, yeah.
Yeah. So just by moving, can have that use changed? Because it doesn't flow with the rest of the language? So just move.
Say it again.
That, okay. I'm proposing that it state, any non-conforming barn that straddles the front property setback may have the use of the portion of the structure that is located outside of the setback. And then you have conforming area changed, period.
I agree with that.
Okay. Yeah, because we're still.
There's no mention of side setbacks, because some of these barns are five feet from the property line, so.
That barn, Alan, this won't, can't apply to.
Yeah.
This, this will not apply to anything that's encroaching on a side setback. The side setback is a setback with a neighbor. A front setback is a setback with a road. And I don't want to do anything to upset the neighbors by allowing somebody that's got a barn, instead of 30 feet, it's 20 feet, and have them make an apartment out of it.
An apartment out of the portion of the barn that is 30 plus feet from the property line.
Correct, yeah.
In other words, they can't do anything with the barn if, if they've got a side. If there's, if any, if the barn is two feet into the the 30 feet, they can't do anything to the rest of the barn.
Correct.
Just front setbacks.
Correct, yes, yep. Because I felt, and John and I talked about it, we all kind of kicked it around, and we just felt that side setbacks are encroaching upon your neighbors. And I don't want to upset the neighbors, you know, if it's 30 feet, 35 feet, then you can, you can build a building right there already.
Should, should we include that statement in the reg, or not?
Well.
If, it does say it, if, if.
It says front property setback.
Front property setback.
Okay, but doesn't mention the sides.
Nope. We can. But I mean, it would be.
It, it, for, for us, it's one thing, but it, it might be easier for them to understand. Might be a little more concrete.
That's a point, and we could just say, if it's within the side setback, none of this applies.
That's a good statement, I think.
Yep. I don't want to do anything with side setbacks.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Elaine.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, I think this is kind of to the point, it's easy for everyone to understand.
Yeah.
I would send this right to public Karen, and, and see what shakes out.
I agree, I think that there's plenty of information. And I don't see that we need to make it any more complicated.
And then the end result, I keep kicking around, okay, once we allow this to happen, I drive around town and visualize, I mean, these barns aren't going to get bigger. They're just going to be used. And it's, the use is going to be 50 feet away from the road. And you can already do everything that we're allowing them. And I think it's going to save some barns and create another alternative housing, if they so choose. All right, let's, I would say, let's throw it out to public hearing.
Jim, Jim, we need to nail down that last statement that we're adding, where's that going to be added, and what's the exact language?
Well, John's got it at 310.17.
No, no, I'm talking about the comment that Elaine made, that everyone agreed should be added.
Side setbacks are are not.
You just said it, it was, it was good.
Yeah, it was perfect.
Jim, it's John, how about if we just, any non-conforming barn that straddles the front property setback, excluding side and rear?
Oh, correct.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Excluding side and rear, because they don't.
Side and rear setback?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Thank you, that was perfect.
Okay, so we won't add it at the end, okay? Now, what about that last section you added, John, which 5.2.1, did we look at that too?
No.
It's on the la, was on the last page.
What is five, I don't have my regs with me, what is 5.2.1? I mean, what, what is, where's that from, that's from?
John, John, do you know what section that was?
I don't have my regs right in front of me, I'm trying to recall. Top of my head, that goes to the expansion, or the building of the non-conforming, where here it says, we're building only on the interior. But the last line, you can see what happens, it says adjoining lot, unless the interior construction is to be in conjunction with Regulation 31017.
Yeah. And that, that's the only other regulation we found that applies?
Yeah, intermingled, I, I looked, read every reg, and that's the only thing, I think that's, oh my God, just permitting.
5.2.1?
Correct.
ABC zones, ABC, no accessory building shall be built within less than 50 feet of any street or rear property line, nor within less than 30 feet of any sound boundary line of an adjoining lot.
Correct.
Right.
The reason we put that in there is because the word, when you build something, I was interpreting, interpreting that as being interior modifications also. I build a kit inside the thing, I thought we needed to touch base with that.
Well, the only, I, I don't have a problem with it, but what they build on the interior, like you said, it's, it's going to be 50 feet away from the road.
Yeah, but it says no building.
Yeah.
They'll be built within, no building shall be built, I mean, we could strike it, I just looked everywhere I could possibly see where it might touch. That's the only thing that I saw.
The only thing, this needs to be corrected anyway, because it has 50 feet as a rear setback as well.
It is.
It is, yeah.
Oh, I thought we were 30 in the rear.
Yeah.
No, 50.
I don't, it's not a problem to leave it there, I mean, you know, that's not going to hurt. No, that's fine.
Yeah, I think, well, clarify this when people are going to, because they're not going to think about that until they go, oh, what is that? And then, you know, understanding that they are, you know, if it's something that's within the setback, and now they're realizing, oh, I can't
Right.
make adjustment until, unless it's outside the setback. I think that's good.
It's all right, it's, I think it's fine, it covers, covers another base. So.
So John, are we adding just the red portion there, right, the, unless the interior construction?
Correct.
Okay, the rest of the reg is already in the current regs.
Let's just add it to it.
Okay.
So I'm not clear, the portion you're talking about, Karen, is not 5.2.1, correct?
No, it is 5.2.1, and he's adding that statement at the very end, unless the interior construction is to be in conjunction with Regulation 31017. That would be added to the current reg.
Oh, that's good. That's good, because like, yeah, like they, I agree with that, that they, it's all together.
Very good, I think it's it's a pretty simple way to, to achieve what we're we're, the direction we want to go in. So I can't see a problem with it. Now, a lot of these, a lot of these, now, did we, John, we were talking about the portion that's outside of the 50 feet, that portion's got to be 51% of the building. Correct, or did we strike that?
And that was never in part of the conversation.
Because I could have a barn that only 10 feet of it's conforming. A small barn, not the big one, you know. I just wondered if, if the conforming portion needed to be larger than the non-conforming portion.
Uh, no, but the, the, the amended portion, or the new portion, the habitable part, would still have to meet the accessory apartment regulations for minimum size.
Okay.
Yeah, and if they don't, if, then they can't do it, so.
Right.
If they want an apartment, now they could use it, do something else with it, but.
Right.
The regs don't touch that, just for.
For a one-way bowling alley.
No, I'm, I'm good with it. I think we'll should we schedule a public hearing, run this by planning, you know, we have to, all our notifications.
Can we do that for an meeting?
Karen?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Can we schedule a public hearing for next meeting?
No, it's a two-monther, because we're changing regs.
Okay. So I will make a motion to schedule a public hearing for.
First, we have to make a motion to approve the, the text.
The wordage, okay. I will make a motion to approve the text, the changes to, in the addition of 3.10.17 to our non-conforming.
And also the 5.2.1 at the end?
Yep, 5.2.1.
And the definition of barn, so it would be all three of those, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Elaine, I'll second.
And is everybody in favor with that? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? All right, so we're in agreement with the language. And now we would like to schedule a public hearing for November.
It'd be November. Does anyone have a calendar with the date of the, I don't have it in front of me, the date of the
Yeah, I can.
For November?
Yeah, I saw. The ninth.
November 9th, okay.
Yeah, November 9th.
So we'll need a motion to set the public hearing for November 9th.
I move to create a public hearing for November 9th, for the purpose of the previous listed amendments to our regs. Which include 5.2.1 and 5 point, help me out here, folks, 5 point.
I know, it's a
310.17.
And the definition.
And definition.
And the definition of barns.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion, do, we have a second? Alan's second, okay.
Okay, thanks, Alan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, November, well.
Unanimous.
Yeah. I think it's a good step. All right.
Bill, listen, Bill listened to all that, and you did a great job, I agree with everything.
Oh, Bill's bad.
That's my blessing.
Well, this, this should give us a little bit more margin on listed affordable housing, too, with adaptive reuse.
Yeah, I mean, anything we can do to encourage housing, alternative housing. I think that's our, I'm all for it myself. There is, I'll get to it on my chairman's report, but there was quite an article in today's Waterbury paper about it. Anyway, let's move on to accessory apartments, another step in somewhat the same direction.
You want me to do this?
Yeah, Kim, take, take it from here.
Okay, so at our last meeting, we talked, and a couple of meetings prior, we talked about making adjustments to the, the size of the accessory apartment that would be allowed in accessory building, and that's 14.3.4. And when I went through it, I decided that we should really look at all of Section 14, because there were things in there that I felt we really needed to kind of come to terms with. And so what I did was went through and thought about the items that we really had trouble, have trouble over the years regulating. And one of those is that we, in the regulations, that states that the owner has to occupy the house. And we have a way to, you know, to to, you know, decide on if someone's living in there or not, and they own it or not. And it's not happening now, I mean, people are renting houses all over the place, so I thought that we should just strike it. The other thing that I thought we should strike, because the change to the regulations have already now allow an apartment in the house and in an accessory building that would delete, I would, I suggest that we delete anything related to guesthouses. So early on in these regulations, guesthouses were added to allow people to stay outside of the home, you know, as a, as a guest. But what's happened over the years, too, is that those guesthouses have gone up, and then, once, and I know this has happened, that kitchens have gone in after, we, we can't regulate that, and I think it's an obsolete regulation at this point, because we do allow for other other ways for people to live outside the main house. So those were the two main things for deleting, and then should I keep going? Or do you want to talk about those first?
No, go ahead, go through the whole thing.
Okay. So then, 14.3.4, I added in the square footage that Bill had talked about, he could have done some research on what a family could live in, and so it was, I took the higher number, there was 1,650 to 1,800, something like that, square feet. And Bill, maybe you can correct me on that, but I took 1,800, so the, I'll read this, the secondary unit in an accessory building shall be subordinate, okay, so this is, I added this for a reason. Shall be subordinate in size to the primary dwelling with a minimum floor area of 450 square feet, which was already in the regulation, and a maximum floor area of 1,800 square feet, not including the garage. So I added in, last meeting, we talked about, you know, not worrying about the size of the accessory apartment relative to the primary, but in the regulations, at the beginning of 14, it says, this regulation is designed to ensure that in creating an accessory apartment, the single-family character of the principal dwelling will be retained. So we really do have to, I think, unless, you know, and I think that's a good thing, you know, that we have a primary dwelling, and that we maintain that, and that the and that's why I added in, without stating the percentage, because I don't know that that's necessary, but the secondary unit in an accessory building shall be subordinate in size to the primary dwelling. That's really, I think, out of all of it, would be the area that I think would be up for discussion, but so.
Okay, that's. But can I, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
If we're no longer requiring owner occupied, how do we define primary?
Primary is the larger unit.
Okay, so the primary simply refers to a, a scale, it doesn't refer to anything else, other than scale.
Right, which is what it does now, yeah.
Not, not yet, because it's still, it's still enforced as a reg, as owner occupied, does. Well, not, not yet, because it's still, it's still enforced as a reg, as owner occupied, does it not, currently?
Um.
The way our regs are written.
So, under, um, 14.3.9, which is what I'm proposing to.
Right, yeah.
Principal residence shall be occupied by the owner, not prior to the, uh, the creation of an accessory apartment. So a principal residence, I guess we'd have to look and see what principal residence was. Is there a definition for principal residence? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it, it refers to all of the regs that, um, regarding size.
Yeah.
And, okay, that's probably how we arrived at that.
Yeah.
But, one, how do we read, how do we rewrite it? I mean, because it means, it currently means one thing, it currently means principal owner occupied, that's the way I would define it.
Do we really care whether the owner lives in the, the cottage or the grand house?
No.
I think all that we really care is that the, that the property owner live in, eat, one of the, the, the property owner live, reside in one of the two houses on the property.
I agree with Alan, I would like to retain that information.
I don't think that we can enforce that, we're not enforcing it now.
Dave Miller, may I speak?
Yep.
Sure. I don't see why we care if the principal owner lives in either place. If, if a person gets called to work in another country for two years, he's gonna wanna rent out both the house and the, and the accessory apartment.
Well, that's one aspect.
I don't see any advantage, uh, in, in making it that complicated. Thank you.
Good, Bill, and I agree.
If you end up with half the housing being, uh, owned by people that aren't residing in, in town or in the neighborhood, uh, it's, that's not a good thing, I don't think.
No, why wouldn't that be a good thing? I mean, what, why, why would it be a bad thing?
Okay, um, may I intercede here? David Miller, when, when we were facing the potential, um, development of that large condominium unit, I brought to the meeting statistics on, um, community and habits of homeowners, okay, owner-occupied homes versus rental owners, and it makes a huge difference on the commitment to the town. Okay, and, well, I could dig up those figures, if anybody wants to review them.
I think I've got examples of homeowners, or houses owned by people inhabited by the same owner that are in poor repair, so I don't think that that's a good lip.
Oh, of course, that's me, you, you can say that. What I'm saying, I'm reading from statistics, I'm not reading from a personal opinion.
No, I'm not reading from a personal opinion, I'm just saying that we look at, you know, there's, that, I, I don't think it makes any difference, I think that's a bogus sum.
No, I, I think we're, you're, you're leaving yourself vulnerable to be exploited and taken advantage of, and I, I at least think, my opinion is that we should research the distinctions before we make a decision about owner occupied or not, that's my, that's my suggestion.
I mean, um, you know, I think there's, in a lot of other towns, even small towns like Roxbury, Washington, New Milford, Bridgewater, whatever, I think there's a lot of houses that people have purchased as an investment and rent them out. And, there's no problem with that, he's, he's not owner occupied, he bought the house, he's renting it out, he's got an apartment over the garage, he rents that out, and, um, it's go, it's been going on for many, many years.
Yes, and that was, that's really my point, I mean, I, I don't think it's, you know, it's been happening in Roxbury for a long time, and I don't see any detriment to the town, and I don't think gonna be a massive influx of, uh, now that it's changed in the regulation, that all of a sudden, all these people are gonna come in and, and, um, buy houses and start renting them out, you know, I think that's already happened, and, um, I think we're just sort of, kind of bringing the regulations up to this, what's, what's already taking place, because it's just something I don't believe that we can regulate.
But now you're talking about, you're talking about a potential of three different residences on one property, correct? We're talking about an accessory apartment, we're talking about, um, adaptive reuse housing. So you're talking about the potential to, to have three separate units on every piece of property that's allowed, correct?
We have that now.
Yeah, we are, allow it.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and I think we're probably treading on some change, some strong change, if we are careless about considering what that looks like.
We already allow that, Elaine.
I, I know that, I know that, but.
That's a done, that's water over the dam.
Done, but currently, as the regs are written, one of those units has to be owner occupied.
And that doesn't change a thing.
To who?
To the people who live there, rent it, or whatever.
Right, but now you're talking about, by changing the reg, you're talking about the opportunity of three separate families living on one parcel with no owner present.
Right.
That's, that's a distinction, that is a distinction for me.
I just don't understand what the owner's gonna bring to the table and add to the fact that he's there.
I think you'll find that it's.
He's got skin in the game, right there, he lives there, uh, most owners look after a property better than a tenant would look after the property.
Right, now, think of our Airbnbs, people are buying houses and putting them on Airbnb, and that owner lives in California, and that's already happening, and we don't even know half of them.
But it doesn't make more of it okay.
Well, it's not hurting anything.
That you know of.
I mean, this has been going on for years, Airbnbs, the guys in California owns a house in Roxbury, and we don't even know where the house is, because we don't have a.
Yeah, Dave Miller here, obviously, it's not much of a problem if we don't know where it is.
Nope. Um, okay, we can continue to, to discuss it, that's what we're all here for.
But yes. Sections of it, just to see how people feel about the other parts. So, what do you, what's the discussion on guesthouses?
I totally agree, because they're outdated, um, people will say, "I'm building the guesthouse," and the following week, in goes the stove and the sink, and they rent it out, and there's no point, you know, I wanna encourage alternative housing and rentals, but I mean, there's no sense, if you're gonna call it a, an apartment, it's an apartment, you know, guesthouses, they're a thing of the past, I agree.
So, it, it, it's possible for someone who is fulfilling all of the requirements to have three units and a guesthouse. Is that right? Is that right, Kim?
Yeah, so right now, they can have.
Yes.
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 So if you ditch the guesthouse, uh, yeah, I don't think the guest, I think a guesthouse is something from, uh,
yeah.
This is a long, long time ago.
50s and 60s.
Dick Man Dyke.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, do we have, do we, does John know? How many guesthouses are in Roxbury?
I have no idea, probably more of the tax department.
Okay, do we have any idea, though? Like, like, uh, two dozen?
I have no idea.
Two, right, near me, and on South Street.
Can't be many, why, why would you have a guesthouse, make it an apartment?
Yeah, I, I would think that at this point, if we got, getting rid of the guesthouse component, it would probably legalize the ones that were transferred and made, you know, given kitchens and became apartments, so they would now, you know, they, they would be legal, so. Yeah.
Yeah, how does, how does that, for example, affect the guy that bought Joe's property, that, where he expanded the barn, and he, we, we couldn't, we had to be careful of not to make it, uh, um, you know, a fully equipped kitchen, et cetera, do you remember which job I'm talking about? Is it?
Yeah, yeah, I do remember.
Yeah, he had a warming, a place to wa, caterers to warm food, I think, it was.
Yeah, how does it affect someone like him, I'm just curious?
He'd fall back on the size, most likely, it's John Cody's.
Yeah, that was a whole lot more than 1,800 square feet.
Okay. Yeah, but, but you seem to be changing that again, too, with the, with the amendment.
Not negative, John Cody, because it's still, that's bigger than the, the lot, more than 1,800 square feet.
Oh, right, okay, John, right, got it. Okay, thank you.
So, um, now, again, I'll bring this one back, John, and, uh, do we wanna send this on to Gail for scrutinization, scrutinizing? I think, personally, myself, I would like to spend the money, pay Gail to tear this apart and see what she comes up with.
Yeah.
John Cody, I agree.
This is, this is a lot more complex than the barn issue.
Yeah, I agree, Alan, and I think what we have in front of us is, uh, is adequate to send out to Gail and say, "Let her chew on it for a while and see what comes back."
Um, it's Cheryl Rosen, can I just ask you a question, Kim, about 14.3.7?
Yes.
There shall be no more than one accessory apartment in the original unit, and there shall be no more than one accessory apartment in an accessory building, so if someone builds a garage and attaches it, um, by a breezeway to the original house, is that now considered an accessory apartment in the original unit, since it's attached by a breezeway?
That's why we're sending it to Gail. I don't know.
That's, we had, that's Cheryl, that's exactly what I thought of up there on, on Joe Burns's property, because they wanted to attach it, remember?
Right, and I'm, I'm not saying there's anything wrong, I, I think that's, I personally don't actually have an issue with that, but I'm just asking that question.
Well, I would think that, you know, I'm thinking about a house, um, in my neighborhood, that there's the house, and then's the garage, and then they had, they actually built a breezeway, you know, this is years ago, um, and not just a breezeway, but enclosed it, and then the garage became part of the house, so.
Right, correct.
Well, I think that, that's a, that, I mean, that's my opinion, but I would think.
No, that's my, okay, I was just curious, because then theoretically, what I'm saying is if someone did that, then they could also have an additional apartment outside of the one that is now attached to the home.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
You could look at it this way, Cheryl, which came first, the, the attachment or the apartment? If the garage didn't have an apartment and they attached it, then they can't put one up there anymore. If the garage was, why, because it's attached, it's part of the house, it's already got one.
Oh, you mean if there's already an apartment in the house?
Correct.
Oh, yes, that's correct, right, right, and they can't, right, then it's moved.
Then they attach the garage, then they, they can't put an apartment, but if they have a garage with an apartment, and a house with the apartment, and they say, "We wanna hook them together," I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I was just thinking in terms of, like, the actual number that you could actually have, and that's one easy way to.
Yeah.
If you didn't really want it, quote-unquote, "in your home," you could build a garage, attach it, you know, by a breezeway to your home, that could be your apartment home, and then you could have another guesthouse somewhere else, that's all.
Yeah, it's still simply three, three accessories.
Right.
In the house, over the garage, and one more, smaller, 1,800 square foot house. Three accessories, and, um, even, even if this property had an, uh, non-conforming barn, that's gonna be one of the three.
That'll be one of the three, or a pool house, I guess, would be. What happens to pool houses, no?
Kitchen, stove, shower, and it's an apartment.
Apartment.
Yep.
I'm just thinking of, you know, potentially, how many somebody could have, how many, quote-unquote, units someone could have on their property?
Three, we're trying to stay with.
Three in total, right, no matter which way we slice it, okay, I just wanted that clarification.
All right, I think it, uh, needs to go for Gail.
Okay.
And, um, because this is an important one, and I want her input on this, and, um, see where it goes from there, I don't see there, there's no, we can't go any further this evening, I think this is, there's no rush, um, let her check it out, and, and then we'll kick it around.
So we're thinking, we're, we're asking Gail if we should be eliminating 14.4?
She's gonna get what Kim wrote.
She's going to get what?
What's in front of you, what Kim suggested.
Oh, okay, all right.
She's getting this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and maybe we can find out, I don't know how, she's not, I don't know how fast she's moving these days with how busy she is, but, maybe we can put this on the agenda for next month, and see if.
Yeah.
For discussion.
Yeah, she, I, hopefully she'll get back to us within a month.
John Cody, what I'll do is I'll forward Kim's, uh, email directly to her and put a rush on it, so that we can have the language.
Okay, yep, for next month, it'll stay on the agenda till we, we get it figured out, it's gonna be on the agenda every month. All right, that's good, that's a good discussion. And that brings us to, uh.
Kim, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
So, is the commission then saying they approve of this language to forward to Gail to, then what, evaluate it, or to?
For Gail's.
How are we?
Yes.
Characterizing that?
But John Cody, I could just send it to her for an opinion.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't think there's consensus on all the topics, so.
Right, that's what I was a little worried about, yeah.
Yeah, just let her have a look at it and see what she thinks.
Okay, and give, give, give us some input on it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Now, um, item five on our agenda is, uh, ZEO report, John?
Uh, just brief, Mike Rice, he finally got back to us about his home enterprise, he was supposed to mail us a check two weeks ago, still waiting, I'll give him a call tomorrow. The other thing that was more pressing, the screening on Mark Lowe's business. He is going to the Wetlands Commission to, uh, seek approval to put up a berm, a six-foot berm across that portion of the, of the driveway next to Dennis's house, hopefully they'll get it, and, uh, an end to that, that's, my fingers are crossed.
I didn't know a six-foot-high berm was possible.
Correct, oh, any combination of berms, fences, all that, it's, it's in there.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure it's in there, I wasn't questioning it.
No, I think that's.
I kind of, I just kind of find it hard to envision a six-foot berm that is not gonna wear down.
No, if there was a tree in there, it'll be 50 feet tall.
I believe we, John, I believe we have something written in that we don't allow, um, plantings or fencing on top of the berm, or fencing.
If you put a fence on top of a berm, the total can only be six feet, it would go from regional ground to the top of the berm, and continue the amount of fence on top of that, so either or, a combination of can only be six feet.
Right. But I believe you can plant trees on a berm.
Correct, maybe we don't say anything about trees.
No.
Yeah, the, the berm up on, um, Apple Lane, by, it, going along, um, that big, that big, that big, uh, stone house that they built about 20 years ago.
Oh, yeah, right.
They have, um, just mammoth pine trees on now, that, that, that berm must be four or five feet high.
Yeah. Yeah, Dave Miller here, they've got a big berm in front of Craig Miles on South Street also.
Correct. That's the one that came to our attention years ago. I think he was headed for a fence on top of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When that went in.
Yeah. What's the, John, this berm, I know in the setback issues, back to my 30 foot side setback, six feet is okay within the setback.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. But we did, we actually did something for deer fencing.
Yeah. Unfortunately, deer fencing doesn't fall into that regulation. You'll notice on the corner of Davenport, that deer fencing project.
Yeah.
Yeah, deer fencing is totally exempt.
Right. Yeah. All right. Oh.
Chairman's report.
Chairman's report. The one thing I wanted to bring up, if, if you folks want to look at this article, it was in today's Waterberry. Maybe you don't get the Waterberry, but it was about Woodbury, which is obviously pretty close and size and everything. And the concern on lack of housing rentals, affordable rentals, it was a lengthy article. And all the, the 10%, every town is supposed to have 10% affordable rentals or housing based on median income. And they had some charts there and there's 30 towns out of 169 that have 10%. The rest of the state doesn't. And with that being said, they're, they feel, the people in Woodbury feel, and it was the zoning, planning and zoning commission, that they're trying to somehow address this before it gets kind of crammed down their throat, that they have to do something in a lurch and hurry. So I don't know. I, it was just an interesting thing that I think our commission should start looking into is what we have, how we can create more. I mean, we're not going to go out and build them for them, no. But we have affordable housing regs already. And of course, anybody can get a permit for subdivision and build affordable. But they just don't do it in Roxbury that often at all. A lot of it was rentals. So what we're talking about this evening might encourage more rentals. So I just want to, I read that with interest and I'm going to look into it more and get some numbers. I mean, right off the top of my head, I don't know what the median income in Roxbury is right now. And affordability is like, it's gotta be below 80% or something of the median income. They had a lot of numbers there.
I think the median, last time I looked was around 400,000.
That's kind of what I thought too.
Yeah. When the last Northwest Council, the fifth Thursday meeting that covered this topic, they brought it up and they said that the state, although they had a goal, that there was not any enforcement of it. There was a lot of discussion, but there was not a lot of enforcement. Like, I think that there's probably been a change in conversation lately, especially lately, because it's been brought up three or four times this month about, you know, the affordability of housing in rural areas based on a more even demographic.
Elaine, are you talking about the desegregate Connecticut?
I'm not particularly talking about that.
Okay.
I'm talking about other articles I've read.
People may want to look that up. I was on a Zoom meeting with the state of Connecticut about that topic. Just look it up, desegregate Connecticut. They are making a motion to eliminate zoning regulations.
Making a motion to what?
To, to eliminate our zoning regulations. They're, they're trying to pass it through legislation right now.
They're not going to do that. They're, they're absolutely not going to do that, John.
Well, it's in discussion in September. Suppose there's another legislative meeting on that. I was on a Zoom call. It, it's on the web. It was through the, through the state who sponsored it. So Barbara was on it also. It's rather, rather interesting.
I think it's, it's something we as a zoning commission really need to put on our agenda and constantly look into this. Like I said, we can't go build them, but the more we can do to encourage rentals. Now, like you said, the median house, $400,000 and that's because it is Roxbury, but that's still not affordable for a young family starting out and.
No, it's not. It's not within a CERC standard.
So we're going to rental properties, all these accessory homes and properties that somebody can rent at an affordable price. I think that's what we got to look into. But this, this is going to take a lot of research and looking into and following up on it.
Well, I, I think it's a good suggestion to, Jim, for us to, for the zoning commission itself to be aware of the facts. And one of us should compile what statistics we learned, what percentage, we should know now what percentage of our town falls under the guidelines of affordable housing. And I, I'm happy to take that on if you want to report.
When you read that paper, they had our percentage in there today.
But we don't know that that's accurate.
No, nothing in the paper. We don't know, but we were, we were a little over 2%.
So I was just looking this up because I was familiar, I'm familiar with this statute. The Connecticut general statutes 8.30G mandates that 10% of each municipality's housing stock be deemed affordable or they are subject to 8-30G. So I have to look that up. The significance of this act is that it allows developers to disregard local zoning rules while also shift proof to the town to justify a denial. That happened in Southbury where I think KB Properties had put in, had gone before the town to put in, I think they were going to do some kind of housing and then the town was denying them. And so they used this statute and then put in the apartments that are on Route 67 almost across Heritage Road.
Yeah.
Right into town, the town water and the town, you know.
Yep.
So that's where that happened locally.
I think all of us can, all of us can just research some of this stuff and bring, bring it back to the meetings. And I want, I'm going to put it on the agenda as the last item. And if we have time allowed, we will discuss this and what we've learned and the numbers and where the state's going. So we can stay on top of it.
Sounds good.
All right. And.
May I ask a question? ZBA, do we have any activity on them? Are they, have they been meeting? Have they had no need to meet?
That I don't know.
Okay. Does anybody know, John? Do you know?
Um, it's not, there's nothing posted.
Yeah. So they, I, I, I've been looking and it doesn't look like they've had any activity at all. I was just curious if our improved regs have helped them a lot.
Do you know if they're doing anything?
I'm unmuted myself. Sorry. It's Julie. They just canceled their September meeting and if there's business, they'll meet in October. But no, there really hasn't been business in the past three years.
Oh, wow. Really?
Yeah. I mean, they've, they've had like one or two a year in the past three years and that's about it.
Wow.
We have one other item on communications, notification from the cog on proposed subdivision 500 feet from Roxbury's border. It's the referral. Karen can explain more about it. They just have to notify bounding towns 500 feet Roxbury's border. There's not a whole lot we're going to say or do to change it if they're putting it in and, you know, it's there for everybody to see.
Well, Jim, they're, they're at the stage now of conducting the public hearing and that's when they notify the surrounding towns.
Right. So if anybody wanted to go.
Right. In case the surrounding town had any kind of input, this would be their chance to, to do, to say something about it.
And where, where is this located?
On 67 and 172. I looked at the maps and, you know, it's a, it's a subdivision.
Behind the, the house that's very close to the corner that sells flowers and things. It's on.
Okay.
It's kind of surrounded by, they're surrounded by roads on two sides and this property on two sides.
So they're going to have a road that comes out on 67. There.
It's going to come out on 67 and that, that's been a, it's a tough place to come out. It should come out on south, is it the South Britton Road or whatever that is?
172.
It was an entrance at or a farm. It's been there forever, but I think that's what they're taking that old farm.
There, there'll be two, two ways for them to get in.
It will be a shortcut.
All right. Well, that's our notification. And maybe if anybody wanted to attend the public hearing, get the information. Karen, do you know when it is?
Um, I don't have in front of me, but I can certainly send it to everyone.
Sure. Might be, it might be entertaining.
It's, it's coming up quickly.
Yeah, it's tomorrow.
Is it really?
It says public hearing, yes, it says public hearing date, 9/15/2020.
Oh, okay. Wow.
At what time? 7:00 PM?
That it doesn't say. How do you like that?
I could check it.
Is it a virtual? Does it say?
It does not say. It says.
It doesn't say.
15. That's all it says.
All right.
Yeah.
I will try and find out some information tomorrow and email everyone in case you might want to zoom in if it's a virtual.
That would be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be really interesting to, to attend and see what they do.
Yeah. All right. Everybody good? Had enough? Entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's something else. Motion to adjourn.
So Jim, do you want to keep, how would you say it? Affordable housing on the agenda now?
I don't want to.
Forward or how, how do you want to? I can talk to you later about it, but you want that on the agenda now going forward?
I don't want to put affordable housing on their agenda. I just, no, it'll come under chairman's report.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
Are we motion, do you want a motion to adjourn?
Good to see everybody.
Yep. Good to see you. A motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Is that Alan?
All right. Thank you, folks.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Stay well.
Bye.
Thank you.